Well, we might as well get things moving here before we open. And I'll ask Councilor Selk to help prepare. Just so you're aware, Mayor Cronin's quite sick. She's got really serious bronchitis and chest infection and stuff. So she's just been feeling really lousy. So she asked me if I would conduct a meeting for tonight. If you remember. Karen, please. Thank you.
Fairly positive. We about 40 at the beginning of this council meeting and we're grateful for the opportunity we have to assemble, for the freedoms that we enjoy and for this wonderful country that we live in. Pray that as we deliberate upon the affairs of the town, that we'll be guided and helped and given inspiration in the things that we discuss this evening. We pray for the mayor, that she'll be able to have a speedy recovery from her illness and that we'll be able to enjoy her company in weeks ahead. And again, we pray for the Spirit to be with us in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, I follow the order. So are there any additions to go to the agenda? Councilor Bankery?
Yeah, I'd like to put on the agenda, ask the administration to give us a report on our roads, condition of our roads. Maybe we can do some identifying there. Also...
That's seven Bs. You've got two items?
Okay, yes, two items.
Okay.
And also, I'd like to have a, maybe under committee and other reports, we can discuss a couple of things over there. So let's just put a discussion on committee reports.
Discussion by Councilor Bankery.
Yep.
That'll be nine E.
I also need to talk about the doctoring that as law committee reports.
Okay, so that'd be EF. And by Councilor Brown. Anything else?
We are doing just basic committee reports, so aren't we?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Somebody move to adopt the agenda of the additions? Councilor Drew? All in favor? Okay. To begin with then, we have a delegation. Mr. Robert Smith from Temple City Star, should like to come forward. Make a presentation, please.
Thank you for letting me come speak with you. In regards to, have each of you had an opportunity to review that letter? The one that I just was handed out to you is a little updated from there to be a little more accurate in regards to that. If there's any questions, unless you'd like me to just kind of read and review that letter, it's basically got most of my details there.
What's the changes, Robert, to the letter? That's all I need to know.
I kind of changed, at the end there, it says, what we have done. Like on the first one is continued printing. We have, sorry, discontinued printing, eliminated the, so those are actions we've already taken. And we've got the online access already on our website.
Okay.
That's being accessed there. The things that we're still in process of doing is maximizing our business sponsorship program in several areas and making the request of basically bulk subscription agreements with the town. And we're yet to meet with the county and the Westman School Division.
Yep.
And the request there as well. We just feel like if we get that support to be able to have an overall subscription so everybody has access to it, then that will increase the readership. Hopefully, we'll make the advertising more valuable for the dollar and be able to help us survive, continue to provide the service that we have in the past.
Okay. Councilor Bankery?
Open your questions, Robert?
Pardon?
Are you open to questions right now?
Yes. Yes.
We have 3,700 people or 3,500 people in town. What about those individuals who do not have computer internet access? What are you going to do for them?
If I could, I'd go buy each computer, but I can't.
See, that poses a big question, you see.
Oh, and I agree. They have not been accessing, well, some of them have been accessing through paper copy. But we are unable to continue to provide the paper copies explained here.
Will you have paper copies in your office so that they can drop in and pick one up if they don't have internet?
We would have to print them off of our computer to do that, which would cost us quite a bit. We kind of figured out if we provided the paper copy with a photocopy, it probably costs five bucks for each copy. You know, for the entire paper like that, at least five dollars, maybe more.
Okay.
And I'm sure, I don't think anybody is willing to pay five dollars to get a copy of paper that they were getting for a dollar twenty.
Any other questions?
This $500 a month, is that based on per household within the town? Have you done the same for them for the county and for the smaller villages as well?
Yes.
You broke it down.
In a sense, yeah. With the county, with the town, the county and the school division, our request is basically the same. We understand, in talking with Jeff, I think you mentioned 1,300 households within the town of Cartson. Murray mentioned that they had about 1,200. The school division encompasses quite a bit. They do not have, I mean, they're a little different than the county and the town, in fact, not a municipality. But we felt that if they can contribute as well, because we do a lot of printing for them. The grad issue, you know, takes up a lot of room and a lot of time and effort.
For sports.
The back page, the sports is always there, basically for them. And we cover a lot of their events and that. So we felt like, hopefully, they could kick in and keep the cost down for municipalities as well. Because they benefit as much, if not more, than the municipalities.
Councilor Brown?
So with the $500 that you're requesting from us a month, so you would like $500 a month from the town of Cartson, is that, most online news webpages pay for it through, it's actually free to those who look and see it, but as far as where their money comes, it comes through advertising. So are we considered, the app, like, would we, are you considering us and the county and the school division, are we your advertising money? Are we your...
Well, we hope to continue with the advertising that comes in through all sources, including town, county, Westman School Division, to keep us going.
So would you be doing more of the writing now? And the...
Well, we'll still be, you know, providing stories and asking the public, they'll also do submissions through photos and the like. So the process of the paper will continue as is. It's just we will not be producing the hard copy. And the subscriptions would come through, basically, the three organizations. I mean, we've also got the Village of Hillspring, the Village of Plenwood, they could participate and we will ask them so, but they've got a lot smaller population, so there will not be a great deal asked of them or requested of them.
Thank you.
So you may ask to answer it.
I'll start here first.
Go ahead.
I do, I just, so right now, if I were to go onto your website, I could access the paper?
Yes.
There's no charge, there's no, like, I don't need a password to get in or anything like that, so it's pretty much free.
Right.
That's how it's going to be.
Yeah, the way, just, you know, the last week or so, we established the online presence and anybody in the world could access it right now.
Just like the Leffler Herald or the Calgary...
Yeah, and I'm not familiar with theirs. I understand theirs, you can read so many stories, so at the end, you've got to purchase a subscription. Or with this one here, everybody and anybody could get into it. But it's basically, you know, for the residents of the town of Cartson, the county, the Westman School Division. Basically, our trading area. There'll be a few that access it. We've got a few subscriptions that are in Edmonton, Calgary, McGrath, Raymond.
So if this is free, with the town donating to 6,000, the people that already got their subscriptions, would you just refund those all back again?
We would refund the ones that could not access the online. The others, we would spend it now.
What I'm saying is if you're providing it free through the town, why would other people spend $25 a year to access it?
They won't from the point of time that the county and the Westman School Division...
Gotcha. One other question. The town will be, if it goes through, the town will donate $6,000. That does not include if the town needs to advertise, the town would pay extra for the advertising within that?
They'll still carry forward like they have done.
Okay.
If they, you know, if that was the case, then pretty soon we're back into...
Square one.
Square one in the fact that, are we going to survive or not?
Okay.
If we make it. So in essence, this request to the municipalities is basically to cover the subscriptions that we've got, plus bring the other online subscribers onboard as well.
Okay.
And towards the end here, I mentioned, you maybe didn't pick up on it there, I added, maybe suggest that a link be provided with each of the websites to encourage visits between the two sites in regards to that. Yeah, the bottom part, let me read it and make sure I got everything covered. We would list the town of Cartson in the star as a sponsor of your constituency free access. We will also develop an email on Facebook, weekly reminder to our readers containing a link to each issue as it is posted for viewing. And for myself, if I wasn't dealing with the paper, I would need a reminder. A family incident, like my sister Vicki, we tried to get her online and she jumped onto it really quick. And she would go in and view it every week. My daughter, and I thought she would be the one that would grant onto it, she says, Dad, I've got to have something to remind me. So I need that paper copy to remind me. This goes back a few years. And we've had the online subscription going for several years, and we've got about 35 subscribers already online that we've had for several years. Through Alberta Weekly Newspaper Association, on their Awesome Archives, we upload that every week and they got that. But we hope to use their system there for our online subscribers. But they said, oh, just a minute, that's for a small amount. Says if we go hundreds or thousands of people subscribing, we're not set up for that. And that's why we went to our webpage, our website, and developed that ourselves. Did I answer the question correctly or did I get sidetracked?
No. Councilor Bankery?
Robert, with this, with this program that you want to adopt, how's it going to maximize your business sponsorship program?
On the sponsorship part, we will contact the businesses. There's about 10 areas that we haven't, that I basically provided the space for. For instance, the weather, we could have somebody sponsor the weathers, somebody sponsored the Seduce Cold Planet. I have a list somewhere that had about 10 areas that weren't covered. The who's who, the community calendar events. The who's who right now, I believe we go with Matt's office for one week and then the following week we go Legacy Funeral Hall, and they're sponsoring that. For the Cartson, or the community calendar news events, I think it was the CFCS, is that the right terminology?
Yep.
Were sponsoring that, but they contacted us a month or two ago and said that their budget wasn't handling that. So that's one that we would have to find a business that would like to sponsor that.
Okay, thank you. Just one good question. Have you thought of the idea of charging an online subscription per year? So that people can go to the website, but if they don't have a code, password, they can't get in? So you'd still create revenue like you have with the paper?
In a sense, we've already done that in the past, and we've got our subscribers out there. We have promoted or tried to promote our online subscription. And we haven't, we haven't had an overwhelming bunch come on. In fact, stayed fairly stagnant at 35, 40 online subscribers. But we made a concerted effort with the paper. Now, my wife says, well, you need to get out past the paper, maybe Facebook with it or something to inform them. And yet, I don't feel really confident that we're going to draw many more than what we've already got. And I'm hoping that making it free, you know, through the municipalities, that will get a lot more subscribers. Not, well, not subscribers, but actually users.
Yep.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, you can, I might, you're using my inner turning, I'm just thinking about one other thing, but go ahead, go ahead.
You can ask us if you like or not. Has there been any consideration with merging with West Winds, the paper down in McGrath and Raymond, and having a regional paper?
West Wind Weekly is owned by a leftish group of papers, there's about 10 papers. We have been in touch with them, but it's a large group and, you know, possibly they'd come along and buy me out. But in the meantime, I've got to survive and keep things going.
Great, okay.
And so this is part of the process here.
So there has been some discussion on that?
They're having a discussion with that newspaper group.
Okay.
A little bit on that.
Anything else? Do you have any more questions for us? Or things you'd like to say? None? Thank you.
I think, I hope I answered all the questions. I hope I didn't get sidetracked on something else there.
No, no, thank you so much, Robert.
So if you have any further questions, just give me a holler.
Okay.
And we go from there.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have you had a chance to read over the minutes?
Thanks, Jeff.
Of the last meeting? Okay. I'll move to adopt the net so that March 13th meeting. Okay. All in favor of that? Okay, thank you. So we have some bylaw and policy business. First order of business is draft bylaw 1667. So I asked Jeff if he'd just discuss that with us and go from there.
Quite simply, from our last meeting, we added that small clause about clarifying the enforcement of the business license. While this was open and while we're just looking at first reading, we had some other things hanging out there from previous bylaws on pawn shops and on some enforcement pieces. They're all highlighted and we put them in here. Just to put them all under the same bylaw. So there's no actual new information on those other pieces. We've just brought them in from another bylaw that was, it was an odd little bylaw. It was almost an amendment, but sitting against its own bylaw. It was very strange. So we plugged it in with the rest of this stuff here under the pawn brokers. So again, it's not new for us, it's just new in this bylaw to consolidate it. Other than that, that's, the only new information is what we discussed last week. So we're just looking for first reading at this time and we'll go over the more detail as well.
Okay. Councilor Bankery?
I'll move first reading of bylaw 1667, business license bylaw.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Period. And B, policy F-20-2.
Counselor, if I could speak to that real quick as well. I'll just let Counselor Barnes get there. I realized after we put this together, it was a little confusing what we threw in there. We threw in kind of our working papers, Plan A, Plan B, what this is going to look like. And then the actual schedule, that's the policy, is the very last page of the whole thing. And that's where you see incorporated into the fees and charges, schedule of the town is the actual fees we're talking about. So if there's questions about how this was arrived at, I can speak to that a bit, so can Counselor Selk and Counselor Brown. This was vetted by the golf advisory board that was put together. There seemed to be, while I will admit, I forgot to get an actual motion coming out of that, we were all talking about it and then no one made a motion about it. I would suggest there was consensus in the room over the proposed rates. As you'll see in the Plan A, Plan B working documents, this is essentially a 3% to 4% increase to offset minimum wage increases. Except in the youth categories, they were dramatically decreased in an effort to invite more youth to play, to get more youth involved. So those were decreased at 40% and 50% respectively for the 013 and 1318. One other thing I'll mention about this policy is, you'll be getting a little bit familiar with it, because we continue to evolve a few bits and pieces of the golf fees. So this may be coming back a number of times, it has small amendments as we learn and develop a few things here. So I just wanted to clarify that before any discussion.
Okay. Counselor Bankery, have a question?
One of the biggest complaints that I've received on fees and prepay fees and stuff like that, is your weekend golfing. And you've got a package here of 10 18-round punch card weekends, food weekends and nine-round punch cards. And the question is, are they going to be able to legitimately use those weekend punch cards and passes? Because that's the time when all the tournaments take place. And the complaint is, we can't get out on the golf course on the weekend because of the tournaments.
Okay. Can I comment?
You bet. Please do.
I do not recall being inundated with weekend tournaments at the golf course. There's like four in the summertime, so I'm pretty sure they can get in with their punch cards on the weekend. We're hoping to have more tournaments.
Yeah. Any other comments or thoughts on this? Do we need a motion to approve these?
Just a motion to approve the policy number, we've amended the policy number.
Okay.
Like that motion.
Okay, Counselor Selk makes that motion to approve the fees and charges under policy F-20-2. All in favor? Good, great, thank you. Okay, moving on to code of conduct, right after that. Okay. All right, Jeff, did you want to address this?
So this is not a pressing item. You have by rule till the end of July to establish a code of conduct bylaw. You currently have a code of conduct policy. We're most of the way there. We're one of the communities who had a code of conduct long before the MGA changes were right. This council's had them as long as I've worked for the town.
Yeah.
So that's not a new thing for Cartson, however, it's now required to be by bylaw.
By bylaw.
So I have a whole bunch of stuff under this item and I sort of apologize for that because there's a lot there. But really, what I thought for today, and I don't think we need to spend a tremendous amount of time, is Raymond drafted their code of conduct bylaw. And we kind of did that as an arrangement where the Cartson was going to draft the mandated public participation policy and send then a draft if they'd work on the code of conduct bylaw and send us a draft. And Marion's hitching a ride on that with Claire's home, and a few of us have decided we wouldn't all just try and create one from scratch. So Raymond went through a fairly thorough process in developing what their draft is. It's not passed by them, by the way. All I was really looking for tonight is when you reviewed the regulation, the legislation and the guidelines, and you look at Raymond's, are there pieces that you don't want in there or are there pieces that you feel might be missing so that we could draft something specific to Cartson? Because if there's no real opposition to how this is sitting, we'll draft a Cartson-specific one and bring that back for first reading and we can debate it in the future. I simply just wanted to get on the radar tonight so we could start some discussion.
Okay. Does anybody like to bring up anything at all that you, have you had a chance to look this over? Any thoughts on this one? I have one. Under item number four, a counselor must not be disqualified or removed from office for a breach of the code. Now, I guess you have to do something pretty serious if you're not going to be disqualified or to get disqualified. So I guess that's one I think, in my mind, needs to be clarified. What are some of the ways that you could breach a code or, and be disqualified? Because it seems to me this is kind of left open-ended, right? And so perhaps there should be, in my mind, there should be some qualifications in there because there's, obviously, there are things that are breached that, you know, a counselor could be disqualified from counsel for. Because we've talked about it at various MGA meetings. And so, just a thought out there, any comments or thoughts on that?
Yeah, if you, if you go into the MGA in the counselor section...
Yeah.
It spells it right out adamantly what you can be disqualified for.
Right.
Spell from counsel.
Yeah. And maybe under that one, there should be a reference to that to kind of get us into there, right? To find out what can become seriously an breach to disqualify. I mean, I don't believe it's ever happened in our council. I know that I've heard of some being turfed on other councils, but I don't know what they're for, but they, they were pretty serious. So I think maybe that's something we should look into. Jeff, perhaps you can make a reference into that, bring that back to us. Any other questions at all? All right, so we don't need anything on this or do we need a recommendation?
Well, what we'll do is we'll draft it and we'll format it under our format, we'll replace Raymond with Cartson, we'll look at a few things, we'll bring it back for first reading. And we can have some more discussion then.
Yeah, sounds good. Good. Sounds good. Okay, other business? Then under A, session discussion under Mr. Smith's presentation on Temple City Star subscription. Any thoughts on that?
I'm waiting to hear your... I just was, one of the questions that I asked was a subscriber fee online. And I guess I'm concerned that a business in Cartson is coming to us and saying, well, you give us this much money. And then that would open the door for a lot of other businesses to say, well, I'm not doing this or I'm doing that, so I think the town should... So I maybe, and maybe I'm not understanding where he's going with that, but I think that if he charged a subscription rate for the paper copy, then that should transfer over to an online subscription, especially if there's no paper that's going to be, people are going to be able to actually look at, physically look at.
Counselor Selk?
I think we can sum it up pretty simply, and that's, the subscription level that he currently has isn't enough to sustain the paper. Neither is the advertisement. So it comes down to a question of, is he providing a service that we consider to be as viable or as valuable as we do, for example, Channel 32? Because this reaches a different audience. So if we do feel it, like it does provide a service that's as valuable as Channel 32, then we should look at doing something otherwise.
Okay.
I'm just afraid, Aunt Ellen's 95, she lived for the paper every day. She doesn't have a computer, she's not going to access it at all. So I think that element is out. They will not, just won't get it unless I run it off for her and take it up to her. I have a little bit of a problem as well with the business coming in. My thought to me is if the town wants this service, either one, they pay for themselves or they are with the taxes anyhow. Number two, maybe a referendum to see how serious they are, if they actually have to pay it out in taxpayer's dollars. And as mentioned before in our outline, we can access anything that the town needs to get out there is on the town's website. So if they're going to go digging through a website to find the paper, we've already got it there for free, you know, as far as the town stuff is concerned.
Okay. Counselor Bankery, did you have a comment? And then Counselor Brown?
Yeah, that was, that was basically my question is, because we have a lot of people in this community, and I mean a lot of people, who do not have the internet, they don't have a computer. And it says here that he's going to give it total coverage fee to every household. We can't do that. And they're not going to access it. And I don't know if this, I have a concern that we're using, we're supporting a locally-owned business, an individual business, like Counselor Drew mentioned. You know, are we going to have other businesses come to us and say, hey, I can't, I can't do this because of, you know...
Okay. Counselor Brown?
I think for me, it breaks my heart that at the thought of not having the Temple City Star, it's been here as long as I've been in this community. But we are in a different phase of life and the internet is everywhere for a lot of people. I understand there are lots that aren't. But I'm concerned with spending $6,000 of the taxpayer money. Take that seriously. And my concern is, what has been brought up at this table is, what's going to stop so-and-so's business from now coming forward? They're struggling. Can we give them $500 a month? And this business, it's a concern.
Yeah. It's a little different now, it's an information venue that we've been using all along, the town uses, everybody uses it. And I can empathize with him, because I know advertising dollars are going down because people are going on Facebook, they're going on here, they're going on there, they don't. You know, and so... You know, and so it is, and the reason I ask that question about the West ones, because larger numbers of people, larger volumes, maybe it becomes viable.
Yeah.
Then you have a regional newspaper. But anyhow, I'm with you. I've, I've been in this town for thirty-some odd years, there's always been a local paper. I hate to see not have local paper.
Okay, Councilor Brown?
I think nowadays, most of the things, when the town wants to get things out, they put it on Channel thirty-two or STEM is putting it on the Facebook page or the town webpage. That's how people are finding out things nowadays. So I understand there are.
Regarding the town.
Regarding the town and upcoming events, absolutely. And that's kind of the way things are going. So my, yeah.
I hear you. Councilor Banger?
I had that, about three months ago, I had a neighbor come to me and says, one of the nicest things that we've ever done is start that electronic billboard out front. They said, if I need to know what's going on, he says, I'll sit, I'll park across the street and watch that billboard.
There were seven seconds.
And, and he says, fabulous. He says, I'm impressed with that. He says, thank you as a council for this one. And I know Council Creek was on council when we did that.
Jeff, you have a comment?
You have a thought, please.
I just, in, in our own business, we don't advertise that way anymore. So for instance, we had a product that we had in, we put it on our, our website, we put it on our Facebook page and within twenty minutes, we had none, like nothing left. It was all sold out because people had saw it on Facebook or whatever. And that's kind of the wave of the future and so.
Well, it's now.
It is, that's what's happening.
You mean deceased people? Kill them, that's your point. That's all right. You got a demand product, didn't you?
No, no, I'm just saying, we had something that was in our store. And, and it went viral, let's say it went viral. People bought it because they, because that's where they were looking. And so I, I think that our society's changing in that way and we're not going to that paper company anymore, so.
You make a good point. I, I had the Lethbridge Hill for thirty-five years. I don't take it anymore when it's too terrible, but anyhow, it's just not there. I mean, I can get anything I need up online.
Online, yeah, yeah, that's.
They're all struggling, all the big papers.
There's a lot of newspapers online.
Even the big ones.
Even the big ones. Well, you.
That are struggling.
Drive to Calgary, you have the Deerfoot Trail and you see where the Calgary Herald, National Post used to be, that's an empty building. Got a big release sign up there because they don't print the paper there anymore. So anyway. Any other thoughts? What do we, okay, go ahead.
Just a couple of things since I did the background that I wanted to consider. This is a bit of a general statement, not related to the paper. Over the next month, you have an odd amount of delegations coming to council, all asking you for something. So next week you have three, and the following week you have two, and the following week you have two after that. I've been, I've never seen this. It's an amazing, you're going to have this amazing amount of delegations. And so what I'm getting at is, we're going to start having budget discussions on April tenth and twenty-fourth. All of these things may be best discussed in the context of the budget, because I can tell you that the total ask between those delegations is pushing sixty thousand dollars. And I'm not suggesting one of them is better or not, that's not my point here. My point is, is to take a one-off here and a one-off there, we may, we may trip down the road if we decide on one now and not one later. You have a lot coming. I haven't seen this many delegations with requests come before.
Yeah.
And, and we're just lined up back to back in every meeting. So I'm just throwing out for some context, we may want to hear this out until budget, April twenty-fourth meeting, and then talk about them all in that context. The other thing I just wanted to throw out, and STEM just reminded me, we did our citizen satisfaction survey a few years ago and asked citizens where they preferred to get their information about town events, what's happening in the town. And again, not to be disparaging, but the lowest of them was the newspaper. So it was community, it was social media, website, community meetings, newspaper, and how people consume their information from the town, not generally, but from the town.
Right.
And so I mentioned this to Council Barnes, in my opinion, the, the six thousand dollars is one thing, but also part of that is that we would continue to do the same level of advertising we have historically. And if online readership on week-to-week basis is twenty or thirty, we're spending another twelve thousand a year right now in advertising on that medium. So we have to really analyze that, that is it worth twelve thousand dollars for a weekly view of twenty-five people? If that's what it goes to, post paper, right? I recognize it's much higher up until now, that's fine. So there's, we've obviously perceived value there. So just a few things that I, I didn't mention previously that I wanted to bring up, but you do have a lot of delegations coming and we may want to have this in a bigger discussion.
Thank you. Any other questions, thoughts, Councilor Banger?
Jeff, with that in mind, our, our budget meeting on the twenty-fourth, you say? Is that dedicated budget?
It won't be the only thing, but it'll be a lot of it, yeah. So we're going to talk reserve accounts next Tuesday at the CCW. And then we're going to be talking, because we need to have some of that stuff sorted before we bring you an updated budget, because we know our surpluses from twenty seventeen now. So we need to have that discussion next week. August tenth, I anticipate, we'll do quite a bit of the discussion and then some tidy up on the twenty-fourth, so that we can bring you mail rate options on the first meeting in May.
You just said August.
Sorry. I never meant August, I meant April. Yeah, it would be a contravention in August, I'm afraid.
With that, with that discussion in mind, Jeff, would you recommend that we dedicate one council meeting for budget?
I don't, so this, I'd leave that to you. My opinion is, ninety-five percent of the work on budget's done. And so we're going to bring you back, now that we know exact amounts on education requisitions, now we know exact amounts of previous year's surpluses. You know, we're going to fill in some blanks that were a little bit ambiguous in December. But I don't think we need to start from scratch, in fact, my preference would be we don't. But we can spend as much time as you need on April tenth and twenty-fourth, certainly. It's no problem at all.
So I, I guess, so we're not going to make a decision on this item tonight. We'll put that off until, till budget is, so is that a recommendation that we need to?
I think if that's just your feeling, we'll, we'll just take all this information in over the next three weeks.
Okay.
And then we'll bring it all together.
Bring it all together and make a decision at that point in time. Okay, thank you. Okay, so seven B, Councilor Banger?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask administration, Jeff, I was in your office here this last week and we talked about the condition of our roads. Notice in Lethbridge Herald that Counselor Court doesn't get it there. Lethbridge is also dealing with extreme road conditions. And.
I read it online.
Are, are we in need, are we in need of dedicating more of our budget to road repairs, critical road repairs than infrastructure replacement in certain areas right now?
Right. So yeah, Councilor Banger and I talked about this for a minute. I've talked with Brandon and I've asked him to come up with some options, using the same dollars that are in the capital budget right now for water, sewer, roads.
Okay.
To, when we do budget, so not affecting the net amount of budget, so we could work in that. Could we look at doing, you know, more of this paving and not do this water line and could we switch some things around? So I wouldn't suggest we have a real good grasp on, you know, I don't think everything's been driven and analyzed since all the snow and ice has been off yet. You know, they, they fixed a few potholes here and there, but we'll bring you some options on that in April.
Thank you. Okay, any other thoughts on road conditions, potholes? I've seen a few, but I haven't seen an inordinate amount.
You haven't dropped it anyway?
Right, not Seventh Street by the school, you'll see an inordinate amount there.
Yeah. And is that, can I just ask a question? Is that because of the harsh winter that we've had, frost coming up, things heaving up and down? I mean, that usually happens every spring, right? There's potholes in places that we.
Yeah.
Have repaired or haven't repaired, now we have to repair that kind of stuff?
What you see up in Seventh, that's a few other places, where the road has been repaired before.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And then you've got that big bank of snow washing into, those are the ones that are falling apart, not the original road, it's the repaired part that seems to be.
That moisture infiltration.
Yes, rips it apart, yeah.
Yeah. Councilor Banger?
Jeff, we talked about the manhole situation on Second Avenue also and how they're, they're worn. I spoke to City of Lethbridge Roads and they usually dip their manhole covers at least an inch. And that's because when they grade them so they don't tear off the, the manhole covers.
But ours are dropped down.
Well, we, we suck the manhole into the snowblower this winter.
No, no, no.
I prefer people hole.
Yeah.
Is that a reasonable thing? You don't disqualify him for that.
But, but our roads are, our roads are in very poor shape, but I'm, I'm concerned about those manholes that we discussed and, and do we need to have that company come back and, and take a serious look at that? Because they are breaking up around the shoulders of that manhole.
I'd have to lean on Bart for that. I, I just not in a spot to say without knowing this was going to be discussed, so I just don't know.
I have a question too. How, I shouldn't say how, but do they regularly, the maintenance crew, do they drive around the roads, look at manhole covers? And like I noticed in the middle of some of the roads, they've got the turnoff valves for the, for the water lines and right by the United Church corner there, I was just turning around, I was just coming to work, you know, the other, the other morning and I noticed the cover was right off there. I don't know whether that popped out from a car going over it or what, but I put it back on. So I'm just wondering if they're looking.
So we wouldn't be proactively every day driving to see what's going on? So if some kid pulled cover off a water gate, it happens. We really rely on the community phoning us. That's what we rely on, is to respond to.
I just put it back and I just wondered, I got thinking, because I know Volker Stevins is driving up and down the roads all the time, checking on signage and stuff like that. And I just wondered if now and then our maintenance crews just have, take a drive around like Barton, you know, he's helping out, so. Okay. All right, so financial report. Anything there? There isn't one, okay. Moving on to committee reports. So you've got your committee reports in here. Okay, Councilor Banger, you.
So, committee reports that I, I went over and I got questions to ask. EMS talked about the, the fervent of the purchase of a new fire truck. That concerns me. It also concerns me that there is a policy in place that whether a fire truck is wore out or not, they're going to replace it after ten years. That bugs me. We have a midship down there, a white one, and I think it's probably ten years old. It might have thirty thousand miles on it and it's probably responded to ten fires and now we're made to, to decommission it and replace it. I can't understand the thinking behind that, being in the automotive industry. People drive their vehicles a lot longer than, than ten thousand miles. And if the pumps are working on it good and everything like that, are we forced by Alberta Fire to replace that truck? And I, and I need to have some direct answers, I'd like to have some direct answers from Alberta Fire Services, because I can't believe that they would put that kind of a strain and obligation on small communities to replace fire trucks that are not wore out. Yes.
Councilor Self?
Okay. With respect to are we mandated, yes. Two, it's not that the vehicle's worn out, it's that the pumps are getting worn out. We've already replaced and spent significant amounts of money on the pump on that same vehicle, so it has to be able to respond, it has to be able to, it's not like you can just refer a ship.
But you, you can't buy a complete new pump cheaper than a hundred or two hundred thousand dollar fire truck?
That's my question too.
A complete new pump? I just.
Maybe look into that.
That, this, this goes beyond everything that I've ever learned in forty years of being in the automotive industry.
Okay, well, this isn't an automobile, it's a fire truck. They're different.
But it's responding to ten or fifteen fires? How many fires do we have in the town of Cardston?
It's not about that, it's about responding to fires in the town, in the county.
Okay, let's, let's also, let's also greet that, that response in the fact that if the town of Cardston has ten fires and the county has thirty fires, how come we're being, the payment for the fire truck is, is evened out?
You don't want to go down that road?
I, I really do, I really do, because I want a legitimate answer on paying taxpayer money, Councilor Self. Because, I mean, per capita, it's a user fee situation.
We hit into a problem with there's ten fires here and thirty there, and then the next year there's thirty fires here and ten fires out there. We, we don't want to be starting a nickel and dime and saying, okay, you owe us a penny because we went over here, but we didn't go over there.
Yeah.
That's, that's one of my concerns, because you never know what year it's going to bring. Like you said, we may have ten or we may have five, they may have twenty-five, the next year it may be totally different. And they also have a schedule, just like the town does, replacing vehicles in town and different things in town. When they get to a certain wear factor or a certain age, they need to be looked at. We don't want to, we don't want equipment breaking down halfway to who knows where to put out a fire.
Ed, go ahead, Jeff.
Just if I might help on this, and I don't think I have everything in front of me. Danny sent me a document, let me tell you when. This was back in December. There is a document called the Insurance Grading Recognition of Used or Rebuilt Fire Apparatus. So this is a benchmark by which you have to grade your equipment. Now, again, not preparing this beforehand, I'm kind of just, I'd have to go through this a little bit and understand it better, but to your question, yes, there is an insurance document saying that for, you know, insurance companies to cover people within a proximity of a fire station, their equipment needs to be to a certain degree in condition and age. So that exists. I can bring it back on a future meeting. I'm really not schooled on it enough to speak to it now. I just remember Danny sending me that a while ago, because he and I were having a discussion about the replacement of the truck at Wyatt ten years, Wyatt this years, and he sent this document to me, which I have. But I, I don't feel I'm up to speed on it enough to sit here and read it and then regurgitate it right here. But we can bring that back later.
Thanks. Councilor?
Dan, with that, with that in mind, could we ask administration to bring back information all on that, that situation?
I don't see a problem there at all.
The only thing I'll throw out, by all means, make that motion, it's totally fine. You have designated that to a committee.
Yep.
At some point, you designated that discussion and debate to a committee.
So if you feel like you want to take mine or Counselor Court's?
Absolutely.
I'm willing to give that up. I, you know, I got about four other assignments I'd be willing to.
No, I'm, I'm not going there, but I, I just, I want to make sure that we're spending taxpayers' money.
And Counselor, you'll have to trust us on the board.
Well, I, I trust you. So if that's what, no, if that's what you want to do, then bring that back to, to this council.
Bring what back? We've already told you why.
I, I guess, I guess where we're coming here, and just a thought, when I was on the commission, it was always about what's the replacement value worth on that truck? It wasn't about what's the pump worth, it was about the truck itself. There are people out there who will purchase them, but as they get over that ten-year mark, then the price, the value of that vehicle diminishes greatly. And so what we're trying to do is to save, we have to buy the new vehicle, we're trying to look at the cost of the trade-in, where we're going to go with, with that. So I think that's probably where we're at and, and maybe you can talk to Danny about that and see where we're at. Have they looked yet at replacements and the costs?
I will tell you that I, I think our, our, our fire services do the best they can to keep it under, under, under budget. Only just very recently did we give our firefighters raises and they're far below everybody else.
Yeah.
Before they're barely at the minimum wage for a firefighter.
Yeah.
And so we're not, they're not out there looking at the gold-plated whatever to buy. They're just trying to keep their equipment operational, so we have rather rough roads around here and out in the county, we have to make sure things are not going to fall apart. I understand it comes from Counselor Banger, it's coming out of the taxpayer's dollar. But we do the best we can on that board to make sure that we're not overspending and that we're getting the equipment that we need.
Well, I served on that board and I, I, I understand this. The thing that is, if you look around, Mid Rivers out there has got an old fire truck that's probably thirty years old. And yet, do they have to replace it? They couldn't afford to replace it. You know, they could hang me down and.
Quarter of the families.
I, I worked as a volunteer firefighter many years ago and I can remember driving an old Ford down this main street that had to be. that had to be 20 years old when I was driving it.
So the policy should be whatever we did 40 years ago, let's do that now?
No, the policy needs to be, are we mandated and is there government money there? If they're telling us we have to replace that fire truck every 10 years, then Dart will step up to the plate and say, hey, you know, we're going to cover parts of that cost because it's coming out of your budget. And I mean, that's a big replacement when you're looking at $150,000, $180,000 for a new fire truck?
I'd like to hear what Jeff's got, when he reviews that file a little bit more.
Just not familiar enough.
Yeah, I would like to hear, when he's got the time to review that, to hear what he has to say about that.
So I can do a briefing on it.
Okay.
Talk to Danny a little bit.
Now, what kind of a timeframe do we have, Counselor Gort, on this replacement? Is there a?
I'm not sure, do you know what is coming in?
It's supposed to happen now.
So we're.
We're at the 10-year mark, it's supposed to be replaced.
Okay.
It's been put in reserves. Apparently, previous council had no problem putting money in reserves for a new fire truck. So apparently, we're having this discussion now for what reason, I'm not exactly sure.
Well, it's good to know, I mean, we do have money in reserve, I know that. We've been putting away, what, $35,000, is it, a year?
Forty?
Forty, forty, for the last, what, three years now?
We've got $160,000 as of this year.
Okay, there you go, so. Yeah, okay, so it's been three or four years that we've been doing this. So we do have our share to put in towards a replacement, okay? And I think it behooves the commission to, you know, give some direction to Danny to, and I'm sure Danny already has that from you, to make sure that he's getting the best value out of the vehicles that he got to trade and get the best value he can get for the new trucks that we get.
He's already been instructed to talk to the C O, both the county and town
Okay.
about the purchase of a fire truck.
Okay, good. Any other discussion?
I just think that we have mechanisms in place to do this. And I mean, I'm looking, I'm thinking about the handy bus, which I serve on. They have a second bus that they want to sell, they want to sell it right away, because the value of that bus is.
Diminishing.
Is diminishing every day that they own it.
Yeah.
And so then that money goes back in to replace the bus that they have now. And that's years down the road, and as long as they have that in place, then.
Does it have enough miles on it? I couldn't, I couldn't tell you.
That was a feces question. Any other further comments? All right, okay, and we've got other committee reports here, any other questions? Counselor Brown?
So I just have a couple of things to bring to counsel. First, let's start with Parks and Rec. I'm on the Parks and Rec advice.
Page down here. Before, after the EMS?
I think it's the last page.
Okay.
So Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, we met a couple of weeks ago, about a week ago. And Kent Winder had a valid concern, and I thought I would bring it to counsel. I don't know if we can have an answer today, but I think we need to come up with a game plan for this. His question was, what is the direction for Town Square? He is over the Little League and softball there, and he right now is wanting to fundraise. He's not asking us for money. He's wanting to fundraise and go about trying to get one dugout. On, I think it's the Northwest Field. And so his question was, he doesn't want to put all this money into this little dugout for these guys if in fact, in five years, three years, they're not going to be there. So I just wondered what. We talked about it in our planning session. What are your thoughts? What are your thoughts on this?
We had dugouts at the Town Square after the Grand Sand came down. And they were full of water and garbage and feces and everything else. So they were removed. The last dugout that's been built is down at the Lions Park, and that was built by private donations and so forth. And as far as I'm concerned, if they want to build a dugout up there on the Town Square, go for it, because I'm not about to be lynched if we turn that Town Square into something else.
Is he talking to Little League Diamond or is he talking to slow pitch diamonds? So he's talking to Southwest?
Southwest Diamond.
That probably will not change direction anytime.
So, but you understand where he's coming from.
Yeah.
He's just trying, he wants to know, five years, three years, if he gets money and he puts it into this area for these kids, is it okay? Can we, can they make that their home?
We've been on board for the Spring Park, which is coming up in 2019, our commitment to help that project. Have, I'm going to ask this question to Jeff, have they made a decision for prioritizing the place they would like to have that? We've talked about several places.
I can tell you where they would like to have it.
Okay.
I think it's just west of the tennis courts, right there. Because there's already that nice new playground right there.
All right, so that was where the bocce ball wanted to go, but now we've got a spot for them. And that's going to be up by the sewer treatment plant, whoever.
That's right.
Okay. And so that's an area that wouldn't affect the Little League.
But it could affect the Northwest Diamond, depending how big it's going to be.
That's right.
Yeah.
And you could potentially, well, see, here's the whole issue out there. You could potentially turn the Northwest Diamond into a Little League Diamond, because they're not going to hit it as far as the big boys.
Right.
And I don't know, there's a lot of that stuff still.
Yeah, I guess the other question I have on that Northwest Diamond, do the women's league use that much? Are they down at the Redford mostly?
The diamonds are all heavily used.
All of them.
All of them. So I guess what the bottom line is here, to answer your question if possible for Kent, is that Southwest Diamond really isn't going to be affected, we're not. I can't foresee in the next five to 10 years that being changed. So perhaps, you know, he could probably go ahead and build that. Okay, Counselor Baker?
If, if, back to Counselor Brown, if, and of course, they hadn't built a dugout, who's going to maintain it?
Town. Town takes care of the soccer field, Town takes care of them. I mean, the thing is, we have locations set up. We've now got bocce ball taken care of, we've got soccer taken care of, we've got tennis-ish taken care of, we've got softball, baseball, they need their spots. And so if in fact, we can say, this, these diamonds are yours, go ahead, start fundraising, I just feel like, who are we to, I mean, they're not asking us for money. They're not.
Yeah.
So I feel like, let's give them the opportunity to make something like that. But I guess my question to you, Jeff, would be, because I was talking to them a couple of days ago, is if in fact, we say, go ahead, start fundraising, get some money, they would bring their proposal for their dugout to council to get it approved, would that be the order, how it works?
I guess it would, depends if it needs council approval.
Okay, they just didn't know.
If they're not looking for resources and it fits on the plan and doesn't interrupt much, I think we can just
Okay.
help them along, you know?
Yeah. I'm thinking if Kent's looking at a dugout, he's looking at a nice one. It's not going to be junky, it's going to look good, it's going to be quality.
And he's not looking for massive, like, these are for the little kids, right? So it's just out of the wind, away from the parents.
Yeah. When you come to youth days, they're going to really like it over there to use that. Hey, Jeff?
I just, I hadn't shared this with Counselor Brown, she brought this up to me last week, and I got thinking, worst-case scenario, that we get some grand ideas and we build a quad somewhere and we abandon the Town Square. I feel pretty comfortable if I was Kent, that the town's either going to build some new dugouts for them in the new location or move the ones they've built. I don't see why we would just abandon them and leave them shuttered, right?
Okay.
I don't see a scenario where they would raise funds, build dugouts, and then we'd say, we're moving over here and these are going to be calf shelters to the highest bidder. Like, I don't see that scenario, I think we would always provide them with a new home. So I think his risk is mitigated. Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
I think that Kent's looking for some reassurance if he does this.
That's all he has.
Because there's lots of rumor in town saying that town council are excited about what we're doing.
That's right, the multi-pitch that's going in, the Spring Park that's going in. I mean, there's so much going around, and I didn't have an answer for him. So I said, well, let me bring it to council and see what. Okay, so I will tell him to, Godspeed.
You know, you had two things you were saying.
Yes, and the next one is, and I. Pardon? Okay, and my final one is the basketball courts. They wanted, Parks and Rec wanted me to bring that one up. They are still really pushing, they feel it's really important to have the basketball court down by the pool. They think it would be used for that pavement area is where the skateboard park was. They think it would be great to have that area basketball court. They think it would get used tons.
Did we ever say we weren't going?
And I forgot to check, isn't it in 2018?
I think it is.
I need to look.
Yeah, I don't have that answer.
And I think that was the location that we had. That was, when I was on Parks and Rec, that was where it would be. Because you remember the Spring Park, there was some people considering that that's where it should go.
That's right.
But then when we took care of the bocce ball, then it opened up their prime area where they wanted to be. So we said, okay, that's it, they can go to the Town Square. And that leaves that open and that would work for them down there.
Their concern is that it's been talked about for a long time.
Yeah.
Are we there yet?
Well? Do you want to make that motion?
Okay.
I'm just looking something.
Soon as he finds money there.
I do know, because my sons dig on the slow pitch. They're definitely afraid that they're going to lose it. They said, he said, we cannot lose even one diamond for any amount of time, they're that book, those ones diamonds. So if we're going to turn it to Southwest or whatever into something else, we've got to have something in place before we do it. We are the envy of McGrath and Ray, they can't even get teams to play. Yet we've got very active slow pitch teams all the time.
Yeah.
I think the basketball court was in the lipstick provision of our council's plans. So I think it's there.
But I just don't know if it was budgeted for, and it was talked about, but I just didn't know.
I would like to see the facts.
I know. Anyway, that's all for me.
Okay, well, Jeff? Give us some direction here, should we go ahead and?
Just let me make a note, but we'll talk about it on the 10th in the first budget discussion.
Sounds good.
Then I can dig some stuff up a little bit.
Okay, and then just tell them that we're seriously considering, and we'll have that decision for them after the 10th.
Okay.
Okay? Any other areas on your committee reports that you?
Just to report back on Historical Society. They had their first meeting with the group, and it went very well. They also had their training on Saturday, which I was not able to attend, but it seemed like, seems like a very good group. They just had their first meeting and worked very well, so should be a good one.
Did he come and talk to you about? Yeah, I don't think I have anything. I attended the two-day conference in Lefford for the library. It was not as well-attended, there was about probably 150 to 175. Usually, there's 250 plus, but the weather was not very good. But there was a lot of people there, as I was surprised, as many as there was. But one of the things, and I went to several workshops, about four or five of them anyways, but the one that I did go to and kind of relates to the museum. And there was a workshop on proper codes when it comes to putting things online, photos, information that's regarding people. FOIP stuff, yeah. And it was very, very interesting. I was quite surprised when they brought up how serious it is. There's a real jeopardy with the FOIP situation, because there's information going out on the websites that haven't had permission given to do that.
That was discussed, actually.
And, yeah, and so I was glad to hear it, and I passed on the information to my wife. She passed it on to Blaine, is it Jensen?
Yep.
And so they have that information now. And once somebody asked the question, well, how serious is it? And then they started bringing up these dollars, $10,000 personal fine and $100,000 plus to any society that puts stuff on their webpage without permission if somebody presses the point, right? And so I thought, that's pretty serious stuff. And then she, and the lady said, and this was the lady, she was from the University of Lefford, and they're very concerned about what they put out there. She said, even if you have a permission and you put it on there, they can come back, withdraw their permission formally, and at that point in time, you have to remove it from the website. Immediately. And so it's pretty serious stuff. So I was very, very happy that I attended that one, because we've obviously had some issues that we need to deal with, when it comes to FOIP and privacy and stuff like that. So that was the only thing that I was really, you know, really concerned about. There was another one that I wanted to go to. I was supposed to be the presenter or the introducer to the presenter, and she was sick. It was all on grants, applying for different grants and how to get around a lot of barriers that are out there. And so I was very disappointed, because I knew that the museum, Historical Society, needs a lot more grants than what they're getting. And so I was going to give that, pass that information off so that Blaine would have that and your fundraising committee. And so it's going to be reheld and given at the Alberta Jasper Conference that I'm going to take. So I've got that on my priority list to go to attend that. And most of these presenters will give you an online copy, they'll send it to you right after. And so I've already gotten three of the ones that I attended, I've got them. And I was going to look them over and see if Jeff needs a copy that we can have on file for the town. So anyways, it was a very valuable, very valuable conference. I was quite pleased that I went on that. And one other thing on the library business regarding the renovations. We have four quotes after the fact, we have one. And then I read over the policy with the library board, the Jim and Mary Curl Library Board, and I explained to them that policy, proper policy is that you get multiple quotes, as many as you can. And so they did, and they got four back. And they were, well, they got, yeah, one they had to throw out, it was really out of base, it was off-base. It was so far out, it was ridiculous. The other three were within, very close to one another. And so there was just a couple of questions that we needed. There was a little bit of misunderstanding in the language, because they wanted repairs, plus they wanted the whole envelope on the library finished off like the town did, with their quote here. And so the three of them talked quite a bit about the repairs. And it was ambiguous whether they were going to do the whole thing or that just included, just did repairs. And so I counseled them to go back to each of the people and talk to them, make sure that they include it in their quote, that they were going to do the whole, the whole envelope. And they've talked to one so far, and it included everything. So anyways, so they're moving forward on that for the library to do the repairs and make it look nice again. So that's all I have. I attended the Southwest, and you've got everything in there. If you've got any questions, fine, other than that, we're good for that. Anybody else got anything they want to talk about on their reports? Okay, so we'll move on then, we've got the C O report. You had a chance to read that over. Any questions on that at all that you'd like to direct to administration? If not, we'll move on from there. Council Strategic Priorities Report. Do you want to address that at all, Jeff?
Sure. So this is new for you, this was everything that came out of our strategic planning session. We're starting to track any motions related to those original motions. You can see them, it goes, you know, 9.1, 9.2, and so on. Progress on them, anticipated completion dates, that's going to live and move around every month. And I'll try and get that to you monthly. It just took me a while to get going on it.
I love this.
So, yeah, it just keeps you up to speed on what's going on with each of those motions.
Thank you.
And when you make further motions associated with. And when you make further motions associated with those previous ones, we'll attach it and try and keep that moving along nicely.
I really like it.
I can make one quick comment about number one, just because I saw it today. There was an R C M P officer on the street up towards the north end. I didn't see one migrant person on that street, so I'm really thinking boots on the ground is gonna make a difference.
I just wanna clarify. Are you talking about the streets of Cars?
Yes, I am.
Now, he may have been looking for somebody else to look at, but here's the sirens going, and maybe he was just there looking for somebody that was gonna be running.
Easy, Counselor Suck. We've been having good discussion with the R C M P recently, so...
Good, fantastic.
I've got a comment. I had some issues today with some of the migrants in behind my office, and I quickly phoned the, the police station. They came right down to my office. They followed them. They found out where they were going, and they, they, they're very mindful of, of who they are, and came in and visited with me for almost forty-five minutes, talking about some of their priorities and about how, how they're dealing with it. And I was very pleased, very pleased. And he had a lot of praise for Brad. I thought, that was really good. They're, they're really happy with working with him and stuff, and, and so they're very well, very much aware of the town's expectations and what we'd like to see, and I was very pleased about that. Anyways.
All of this is noted on the Council Strategic Priorities Report. Again, I've had discussions with E M Ts in the last week or so. There's still a major concern at times that we are not getting ambulance coverage here. It might be a ten-minute wait. It might be half an hour wait, when some of those guys time out after sixteen hours, or if the ambulance is gone for whatever reason. I know there was at least one situation where there was no ambulances on the reserve, so it's not us. They told them to bring them in by private car, and it was an overdose. So we've got some situations that we need, and I don't know unless the government loosens up on A H S or they find other ways to do this, but we are having times where there's no, ambulance will not be there in five minutes.
I've talked about this with Danny, and legislation in place that we don't really have a lot of say.
We don't.
And, you know, and I think I told you before, my vehicle was commandeered a year ago, and I...
I just wanna keep that on the front.
Yeah, we, we definitely need to, and it's something, you guys are on the committee there with, and you get a chance to talk with Danny.
But we're only on fire. We're not on emergency.
Yes, you are. You are, but Danny's there. He might be able to put it in his ear.
Spencer.
Counselor Suck.
We've, I think, included in the council package, it was a... I think the C E O from the county is going to draft a letter on behalf of C C about the whole ambulance being in code red, so that's, was brought forward.
Yeah, it's, it can be pretty serious, and we've got to, we gotta do something about it. So, and a letter, I think, maybe would be an appropriate thing. Do you need a drink, Counselor?
Um, yeah, I do. No, I'm good. Thanks.
Sure? Would a, would a letter be appropriate? Do you think that would help? Have we said one before?
I thought we had.
Yeah, I think if you go back a ways, there was quite a...
Maybe it's time to bring it up again and send another letter.
We really believe next year, when the provincial election's being run, we really need to start handling about stuff like this.
Yeah.
So a letter is being sent. That was what I was saying.
Yeah, I think so.
We're already sending one.
Okay.
And how many letters you wanna send, whether you wanna pay for the legislature or something like that.
That'd be a bad idea. Okay, so police officer, police, the peace officer report. Any questions on, on that? I, I like the format that we're getting from him now. It makes more sense to me. I find it easier to, to read. I had a meeting with the, with the peace officer, and I think I told you, with the task force regarding the cats and dogs, and so we've met, and Brad's working on a piece. I don't know if he's had a chance to talk with you yet, Jeff. So he's working on it, and he's going to be bringing some information to you that you can bring to council, and we'll have a better idea of where we're, where we're gonna go. One of the, still, I mean, there's not near as many dogs that are out there, but there still are, stuff.
There's lots right now.
I, I've noticed one fellow has a dog on a leash, but he's always got a spare dog following him. It's not on a leash.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure, sure you've all seen him on Main Street, you know, so. I see there's four dogs and poundage. We haven't seen that one for a while. That was good.
I do, you see, the second lowest...
Pardon me?
Second lowest totals is on foot patrols. Again, I don't know how effective they are. I hope they'd be effective, and I know he has other responsibilities he has to take care of as well, but I'd sure like to see continued foot patrols down there.
I, I think Brad's, he's up to his ears with everything.
Oh, he is.
And he's doing his, I, under the circumstances, he's doing a good job. Jeff, maybe you could kinda comment on where we're at with the hiring of the new...
Close is on the sixth, I think, something like that.
So there, so we've got it out there, and you're getting applications in, resumes and stuff, so we'll be able to hear that in a week or so? Okay.
Well, it's gonna be...
Now, you, you make the decision on that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, and then you'll let us know where we're going next. Okay? You had another session that you wanted to talk about, Counselor Bangry, or did we go through that already?
We have to do that.
Okay. All right, so we're finished that stuff, now we're in the correspondence. We've got a letter of thanks from the, from the Rotary Club for our support for the Performing Arts Festival. How many of you had an opportunity to go to that? Anybody have an opportunity to go? Good, that's good. My, my wife helped out for two or three days, and she thoroughly enjoyed it. We have a lot of talent in our community. That's really, really good. Okay, so... Any other, any other thoughts? We got this one letter from, this is Elise Fallon regarding the Alberta Health Services, Air Ambulance Services. Anything moving on there that we need to be aware of, Jeff, that we don't know, that's, okay? Counselor Bangry?
Jeff, about two months ago, we received a notification from Janet Edwards that she'd like to put on a, an emergency ambulance trainer session in Glenwood in April. Is there any thing to know about that?
You're all booked for the thirteenth. Thirteenth? Is that the right date, I think? It's a Friday?
Thirteenth of April?
Yeah.
It's in Hillspring, right?
Is it in Hillspring?
It's in my calendar.
What are the times? Are you're gonna send us, you're gonna send us an email out of that?
You should have it.
We already have it.
You should have it.
It's on the calendar.
I hadn't seen mine yet, so, okay, I'll look for it.
Thirteenth of April, five P M.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
Friday night, take a date.
Any, any talks about, or any thoughts, Jeff, on the news release about the M S I?
Um, no, not really. Just, I sat in a webinar with Minister Anderson. Essentially, we'll stay pretty stable the next two years. It's going to expire. Minister C C was supposed to give a little more guidance to what it was gonna be replaced with, but was kind of vague in the budget, but there is something coming forward from the ministry for us soon, but that's all I know right now.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. I think if there's no more discussion, then I entertain a motion to, for a break, and then we'll go to the counter.
I'll make a motion that we, we break for ten minutes.
All in favor? Thank you.